Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Nice to be back. Nice to see familiar faces at this table and also in the audience as well. A couple of quick things on the agenda I'd like to add, unless there's any objection. I'd like to add, after Citizen Speak and before the Superintendent's Report, I'd like to add MASC nomination update. Under Superintendent's Report, if the Superintendent is ready to do it, I'd like to add before Happening's headline follow-up, if that's okay with the Superintendent.
Yes, thank you.
Any objections to those additions?
None. I have one more. Under Finance Subcommittee, I'd like to add a vote on the Fiscal '17 Budget Development Calendar. We had that on our master calendar, but didn't make it on the agenda.
What was it?
A vote on the Fiscal '17 Budget Development Calendar.
And we'll add that as the third agenda item.
Yes.
Okay.
In my, under executive session, the approval of minutes, did I miss that we got new ones?
We didn't get them yet. We haven't approved, these are the ones that we've received but haven't acted on yet.
Right, but I thought...
There will be new ones tonight.
Oh, there will be new ones tonight.
You'll receive new ones tonight.
That's why I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, any other adds or revisions to the agenda? Without objection, that will be the agenda. First, we'll move to Citizen Speak. Maura indicates no one for Citizen Speak, so let's go to the MASC nomination update, if we could. Could we have joining us at the table Lynda Lee Sheridan, Mary Kelly, and the representatives from the Mass, I'm sorry, the Milton Foundation for Education.
I had chairs. Sit or stand?
I retire, I'm retiring.
Mary Kelly.
What happened to the...
We should add some chairs. Let's add some chairs. Bernadette's going to take care of that. No, no, no.
I did not know they both belonged.
Never thought we'd see you guys back in here. You two, not the rest of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good for you guys.
So, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is a statewide organization and on an annual basis confers awards on certain individuals and entities who have added to, contributed to, and had achievement in the area of public education. These awards are considered from the 404 districts, school districts in this Commonwealth. And so, it is an achievement to have one individual or entity who receives an award, one of these annual awards, from this statewide organization, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. This year, this community has three. So, it is indeed this year an embarrassment of riches. We have three that have been awarded recognition from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And each of these award winners will be invited to the statewide conference in, I believe it's in November, at which time they will be presented with those awards. But, we didn't want to keep the secret. We wanted to share in the glory of these awards. And you'll be receiving a real substantive award, as some in this district have received before. But, we have our own little award that we want to give you to recognize this. So, let me identify those who have won the awards, if you don't already know. First, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has awarded a Friend of Public Education Award to someone in this community. The Friend of Public Education Award recognizes an individual who, through her contribution to the public schools of any community, has demonstrated a commitment to and support of public education. Now, it has been said about our award winner in this category that she has been a strong proponent for special education, was a voice for working families in Milton, focusing on user fees, athletic fees, costs of field trips. She served on the school committee for 12 years until this past spring. She was a vocal advocate and has been and continues to be a vocal advocate for public education. She has been known as a diligent and detail-oriented member who asked relevant questions and spent literally hundreds of hours poring over budgets and financial documents. She was a tireless advocate, has been and continues to be, a tireless advocate for our public schools. And so, it is a pleasure, and we take great pride in this community in recognizing the winner of the 2015 Massachusetts Association of School Committees Friend of Public Education Award, Mary Kelly.
Mary, you have to come shake our hand.
So, if we only had one, that would be an achievement. But, as I said, we have three. We also have an individual who has been recognized with the 2015 Community Leader for Public Education Award. The Community Leader for Public Education Award recognizes an individual, community leader, who has demonstrated outstanding support for the public schools. And our winner in this category, it has been said of this individual that it is difficult to imagine another individual who better exemplifies both personally and professionally the role of an advocate for a public school district. She served on the school committee for nine years. She has served as a professional in education, as a special education professional, and as an elementary school principal. She is well-known in this town as a true Miltonian of the year. She has been a strong advocate for creating environmentally friendly school buildings. She's been a consistent advocate for data-driven decision-making and an enthusiastic supporter for athletic teams. She has been recognized as a true advocate for the Milton Public Schools. And so, it is with great pride that we recognize the 2015 winner of the Community Leader in Public Education Award, Lynda Lee Sheridan. As I think LeBron James once said, "Not one, not two," but we have three. So, let me disclose, in case you don't know, the winner of the Outstanding School Partner Award from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The Outstanding School Partner Award recognizes a corporate or nonprofit entity who, through their contribution to the public schools of an individual, community, region, or at-large, have demonstrated support for public education. So, just to read some of the information about this award winner. The Milton Foundation for Education has been a huge advocate and supporter of this district since its establishment in 1995. This district has been a beneficiary of extensive work. And it's fair to say, it has been said, that this district would be a vastly different school district but for the efforts of the Milton Foundation for Education. The volunteers of the Milton Foundation for Education have worked tirelessly to improve the educational experience of every one of the 4,000 students in the Milton Public Schools. Milton Foundation for Education, among other things, has been instrumental in funding and installing wireless internet in all six public schools. It hosts the annual Monster Dash, and the proceeds go to Sam's Fund, as we well know, which supports science enrichment in schools. And it has been an advocate and a huge assistant in enriching the classroom experience for every student in the Milton Public Schools. And so, the winner of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees 2015 Outstanding School Partner Award is the Milton Foundation for Education. And so, as I mentioned, these awards, you'll be invited to the annual dinner and the annual conference of the Milton Foundation for Education. I believe it's in November, it'll be in Hyannis. On occasion, the MASC comes to the community to confer the award, so that's an option, too. We could do it at a school committee meeting, if you don't want to go to Hyannis. Typically, people will go and pick up their award, but if you want to do it at a school committee meeting, we'd be happy to have it done here for one or two or all of you. And the award that you receive from the MASC will be a little more substantial than what we gave you tonight, but certainly, we take great pride in all your efforts. And we appreciate everything that you've done, and we appreciate the fact that you've now been recognized statewide for all that you do for the Milton Public Schoolchildren. So, thanks again.
Mary, you want to stay? You want to stay? Do you want your old seat back? I wish you'd waited till we got...
Sorry, I couldn't.
What did you tell her?
Congratulations.
What did you tell her? Get your hair.
Good going.
See you in Hyannis.
Finally got people to go to...
Very nice, Mike.
Okay, so, Mara is taking pictures. We'll wait just a minute while Mara takes pictures.
Do you want to have Bernadette set up her presentation?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Bernadette, if you want to set up your presentation while we're waiting for Mara.
I'm going to read it.
It's all set up, Bernadette. You just have to open the front.
What does it say?
Open the front of the projector.
My mother taught me that very during...
All right, so, let's move to our, we have our Scrivener back, so let's move to our next item on the agenda.
Read it when I...
Scrivener. She takes the minutes. Let's move to our next item on the agenda, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. I'd like to welcome here tonight our Elementary Science Coordinator, Bernadette Moonen, who had a very exciting professional development day with over 50 of our elementary teachers in science notebooking. Tonight, Member Varela had asked for an update on, as the public and the school committees are aware, that we began in our English elementary program, a STEM strand. And so, we had a very successful first and second and third grade implementation, and now, we're moving into the fourth grade, and Member Varela asked for an update. So, I think the timing is perfect with the kickoffs of school. And Bernadette went this summer to Worcester Polytech for training, is training the fourth grade teachers, and she's going to give you a brief overview tonight of what the fourth grade continuation of the Innovation Pathways Program in the English program will look like. So, welcome, Bernadette.
Can you hear me? I'm happy I was able to be here tonight when those awards were given out. Good timing. I'm happy to be here tonight to share with you information about the Grade Four STEM Experience, which will be the Project Lead the Way Launch Curriculum. And it's important to note that Project Lead the Way is a K-12 curriculum, but that launch refers to the elementary portion of this. So, they have recently developed a K-5 curriculum. Mary did just kind of go over this, but I wanted to give just a very brief overview of how we've gotten to where we are now, which is rolling out the STEM program into our fourth grade. We began this STEM program in the English Innovation Pathway back in 2012, and our first graders engage in engineering activities using the LEGO Engineering Curriculum, which was developed by Tufts University. And students in first grade engage in engineering activities that are often based in children's literature, and they use Legos as their tools, and they engage in the engineer design process to solve those problems with peers. In second grade, our students are engaged in the LEGO We Do Robotics Program, which enables them to build simple robots using tilt sensors and motion sensors, motors, USB hubs, gears, pulleys. And then, they take the robots that they built, and they actually program them to move and make sound using this developmentally appropriate drag-and-drop computer programming software. In third grade, students are engaged in the Creative Computing Curriculum, which uses Scratch as a programming language to help students develop interactive media projects and teaches them to be producers of technology rather than just consumers. So, that brings us to grade four, and that's where the program is growing this school year. And I'm so excited to introduce Project Lead the Way into grade four. It's a perfect fit, and I can't wait to show you why. And I know that I gave very brief descriptions, but I hope you can see that by the time our students have reached fourth grade, they've had a pretty well-rounded STEM experience. They've done robotics, they've developed their computer programming skills, they've learned all about engineering and how to be an engineer in the elementary level, and Project Lead the Way takes all of those skills and develops them even further. So, I'm excited to share that with you tonight. I'd like to begin the presentation with a very brief video that was produced by Project Lead the Way that gives you a little glimpse into what a Project Lead the Way classroom looks like and sounds like. Just need to click on it for the presentation.
PLTW has invested resources in developing an elementary curriculum so we can provide a K-12 continuum that really prepares even our youngest students for the global economy. The elementary curriculum is just me doing for my students. Really, science has become their favorite subject. They so look forward to our time when we're working on projects. The students are highly engaged. They are very excited about their projects, anxious to explain to you what they're doing.
It looks like this. It's really cool.
They really don't let stop working on that activity to move on to the next thing.
They find that when I introduce a project to them, or if we have a Project Lead the Way project, they get so excited about it, they go home afterwards, they want to look at it on the internet, do further research, they come back, they want to share with their classmates what they've learned, and it's just taken our learning tool.
The lesson that we did today is based on the Three Little Things. We've been reading stories and talking about the Three Little Things. So, today, they've all been given different supplies, and their goal is to create a house that cannot be blown down by the big metal.
I made a house out of brick, concrete, and concrete. I'm learning from real engineers and engineers, so I'm never be...
No one has the same supplies at the table, and I have to admit that they do it better than I did. I did my samples, all mine fits.
Mostly our school.
I like mine.
You're not kidding, are you? Project Lead the Way activities are very different from a traditional standpoint. The olden days where you do it this way, this is the only way, it's right or wrong. This curriculum opens it up to, there isn't a right or wrong. If we make a mistake, it's not going to be all right. I don't believe you're perfect, I'm not perfect, I may never change, but next time, I would try it this way.
How could you change it, design it? How could you change it to make it better? This is awesome. Let it change better. Think about how you can make it better.
My goal or hope for my students in the future is really that they'll be inspired by the Project Lead the Way curriculum to become mathematicians and scientists. I tell them all the time that someday, they're going to solve the world's biggest problems, and they're going to be creating innovations that will change the way the world operates. And I really think that this curriculum is the beginning step to inspiring them to do other things.
We love Project Lead the Way as a whole, and looking at it at the elementary level now, what we're finding is that those students are able to reach those higher-level thinking skills as a natural part of every single day. So, in comparing the programs at the various levels, we already see it happening at the high school level tremendously. We're seeing it at the middle school level a little bit more. And now, for us, it's more looking into the future, saying, "Oh, my gosh, look what we're going to see over the progression of all of these years for these kids." Just exactly what we're looking for.
So, that just gave you a brief overview into a classroom. You saw different grade levels engaged in Project Lead the Way. And I can't wait to come back later this year and share some of those images and videos with our very own Milton Public Schools students. As I mentioned before, Project Lead the Way is a natural fit for the expansion of the STEM program and the Milton Public Schools English Innovation Pathway. For the Project Lead the Way Launch Curriculum, the elementary curriculum, every grade level has four modules. So, there are two engineering modules, one biomedical module, and one computer science module. So, our fourth graders will go through all of those modules this school year. The skills students have learned up to this point, like communication and collaboration and approaching a problem from a variety of viewpoints, will help them to be successful when they engage in these types of interdisciplinary and hands-on lessons. Each module has a similar structure. So, the module begins with a story that the students read with a partner on an iPad. It's an ebook. And in that story, the characters encounter a problem. And that essentially is the problem that students will be going back to and eventually solving at the end of the module. After they engage in this story, they do a series of lessons that helps build their content knowledge and skills that, again, in the end of the module, help them go back and ultimately solve the problem that was presented in the literature. Every module has assessments and essential questions embedded, and there are natural ways to integrate math, general science, and reading and writing into these modules. Technology also plays a vital role in that many of the lessons, students are using iPads with their partners and projecting them onto smart boards. You may be wondering at this point how this ties in with the great things that are already happening in the classrooms in the Milton Public Schools. So, every student, regardless of program choice, both in the English Innovation Pathway and the French Immersion Program, are taught using the very same general science curriculum. And that curriculum addresses the science standards, technology, and engineering standards. So, all students, regardless of program choice, are getting what they need. The STEM program, like Project Lead the Way and the others I described earlier, are meant to be complements to what's already happening in general science, in English Language Arts, and in math. So, these really complement what's already happening in the classroom. So, now, I'd just like to take you through the four modules that I alluded to earlier, the two engineering, the one biomedical, and the one computer science module that our fourth graders will engage in this year, very briefly. So, the first I'll talk about is called Energy Collisions. And in this module, the story students read have characters who are riding in bumper cars. And these bumper cars unfortunately do not have seat belts. And this worries the characters, and it gets them thinking about why and how one might be injured when a collision happens. So, after they read the story, they engage in a series of hands-on lessons that builds their content knowledge and skills around potential and kinetic energy, energy transfers, and the relationship between the speed of an object and the energy of that object, amongst other things. And that leads them to a point where they can actually develop a restraint system for a passenger. And in the classroom, that passenger is actually an egg. So, they're developing a restraint system that would protect an egg. The next module I'll discuss is Energy Conversions. And in this module, students, again, begin the module with a piece of literature. And in this story, the characters are volunteering their time, and one of the tasks that they need to complete is moving big, heavy boxes of donated food from a truck quickly to a different location. So, students engage in, again, a series of hands-on lessons over the course of the module, and they learn about types of energy, the forms of energy, ways that energy is transferred and converted, and also focus on the engineer design process, so that eventually, they can pull it all together at the end of the module and develop a system that would help these characters in the book get the donated food boxes from one place to another. The third module that our fourth graders will engage in is a computer science module. So, in this story, the characters are riding skateboards, and one does not have a helmet on, and he falls and he gets a concussion. So, when he goes to the doctor, the doctor explains to him that it would be easier to diagnose if they had some type of baseline assessment. So, Milo, the character who falls off the skateboard, has some very good friends who were inspired to help him by designing their very own baseline assessment. So, that's essentially the challenge that our students will have. They go through a series of lessons that teaches them the similarities and differences between the human brain and a computer system. They learn all about how computers process and receive information and give out stimulus. And they also learn a little bit about the nervous system. And eventually, they use an iPad to design a baseline assessment, which is a reaction time test that would help the character in the story. And the final fourth grade module is the biomedical module, which is Input/Output Human Brain. The story that they read is somewhat similar to the story I just described, except that the characters see children in their neighborhood riding skateboards and bikes without a helmet on, which concerns them, seeing as how they've had that experience. So, they decide to do the right thing and raise awareness amongst their neighborhood about helmet safety and concussions. So, that is essentially, again, the challenge of our fourth graders. So, they learn more about the nervous system structures and functions, and what happens when a nervous system gets damaged. And they then create a video or podcast to raise awareness about concussions. So, you can see how all of these lessons are, I gave a very brief overview, but they're rooted from the very beginning in literature. And I didn't go into detail about the specific lessons they'll be doing, but they're hands-on, they are directly related to the general science curriculum. But, there's also launch logs that come with this, which is essentially a science notebook for this program, where they're collecting data and making graphs and analyzing the data, writing about what they see, making claims and evidence based on the activities they're doing. And this slide is just meant to highlight the fact that these modules were designed with Common Core state standards for both ELA and math in mind, as well as the Next Generation Science Standards and Computer Science Standards. So, there are many opportunities to integrate this into different subject areas, just like we do with grades one, two, and three STEM. In addition to that, I just wanted to highlight the fact that the first two modules I spoke to were Energy Collisions and Energy Conversions, and one of our fourth grade units is Energy and Electromagnetism. So, you can see how nicely they do complement what's already happening in the classroom. It allows them to take their knowledge a little bit further. So, at this point, I just wanted to talk about the steps we've taken right now to lead to some successful implementation of this program. As Mary mentioned, over the summer, I was very, very fortunate to attend the Project Lead the Way Training Program at Worcester Polytechnic Institute, and it was one of the best professional developments I've gone to. We got to engage in some of the activities students would be involved in. There were many science teachers and curriculum leaders from Massachusetts and New Hampshire there that we were networking with and talking about implications for instruction, and what would this look like and sound like? How is it similar and different to what we're already doing? It was there that I learned everything I need to know to implement a training session for our fourth grade English Innovation Pathway teachers, which will take place early this September, a full day. And from there, they'll receive ongoing support from both myself and from Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way has a very supportive structure. They have online usernames for the teachers, where there are blogs for every module. So, there are questions and comments and thoughts posted by other teachers implementing this program that our teachers can read and respond to. this program that our teachers can read and respond to, that I can read and respond to. They also have a support phone number that I've called a couple times, and they -- you're not on hold for too long. And they're just -- they're a really nice program with all of the right things in mind and happy to help. The resources we need to make this successful are the wireless infrastructure, iPads. They share iPads for every two students while they're engaged in some of these lessons, the capability to project, and also the module kits, the materials that they'd be using to implement. And thanks to the support of the school committee and the advancement budget, and also the MFE, we are in really good shape and ready to hit the ground running this September. I'd like to end the presentation with another short video that was developed by Project Lead the Way that explains a national perspective on these types of skills and why they're important and how Project Lead the Way aligns with it.
Can you tell us why Project Lead the Way has invested in this approach, and what are the benefits of this approach over other traditional learning methods?
Inspires students. It engages them in ways that traditional learning doesn't.
The Project Lead the Way team has really shown that this is that final connection in this journey of elementary school kids, young, get them engaged, get them acquisitive, whether they're boys, girls, whatever it is, and then have them go through the journey.
I see people like Project Lead the Way as a very important instrument in building the pipeline for us.
We looked externally to try to find the best partner out there to help us to make a positive impact. We discovered Project Lead the Way. It's been a great relationship for us, and we've been very, very impressed by the quality of the materials and the training that they're able to provide. So we made a big investment, $2.1 million over a three-year period, and we're sponsoring ultimately over 100 high schools. What has made us successful is the implementation of Project Lead the Way in the engineering curriculum and the biomedical.
But this program, students actually apply math and science.
All of the Project Lead the Way courses have taken, have been my favorite courses by far. I look forward to going to those classes.
They get very excited, and way in which Project Lead the Way carries out its work. Kids turn off to math and science at an early age. BLTW is really doing something about this problem.
And that wraps up my presentation.
Thank you, Bernadette.
Ms. Padere.
That was fascinating. I just have a quick question. So it's a K-12 curriculum. Are we just up to four right now, or is this something we're going to continue in the high school?
This -- so I work closely with Amy Tom from the high school and with Kristy Chapetta from the middle school. They have activities in place that certainly are in line with what we're doing here. We want to grow this into fifth grade next year. The STEM program will certainly be growing to fifth grade. And the modules, again, align with all of the standards, so it's a natural fit for our fifth-grade STEM program. But what's already in place at the middle and high school seems to be working for them right now, and it is, again, totally in line with what we're doing. The thing that Amy and Kristy keep saying is, what are we -- you know, we need to keep up with these kids that are coming through this STEM program and be really keen and aware on where they'll be when they eventually reach us at the high school level, and make sure that we're challenging them at that time, because they will have had all of these experiences. So while Project Lead the Way is not at our middle or high school level, they are certainly doing things that are right in line with it.
Okay, so do you, on that realm, because this curriculum is focused in the Innovation Pathways program. So the students that haven't had these, haven't had this curriculum, is there going to be kind of a difference in how they approach the curriculum in the middle and high school? You said it's kind of aligned, and all those students have had the same background up until now. But now, as we regrow this into the fifth grade, are we going to have to look at those students differently, that either, you know, come from the Innovation Pathways or the French Immersion Program?
I think it's something that's been on our minds and conversations we're certainly having at this point. Our rising fourth graders will be the first class that has gone through this program. So in two years from now, they'll be entering the PRS. And Kristy Chapetta is just so on top of things, and she's already thinking about ways that she can address this. They do have an iSTEM course elective at the middle school that students are already interested in. The interest might grow as this cohort of students and the following cohorts arrive. And Karen Spalding and Kristy, I'm sure, will be receptive to that and, you know, do what they need to do to offer more strands or implement more challenging courses. But much like a language, when students enter the middle school, whether you went to French Immersion or not, you're able to engage in a language course, and it will be similar to that.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just didn't want to have it end at fifth grade and not have them continue to grow. And then just one other quick question. How much time do they spend in this curriculum, either per week or per day, or what's the easiest way to answer?
Sure. So the lessons are concentrated, like Project Lead the Way lessons, similar to what we've done in first, second, and third grade, that are weekly. But it does not stop there. Again, as I said before, it's integrated into math and into English Language Arts so seamlessly and into the general science curriculum, that the lessons are not once weekly. They, you know, they dedicate a time, you know, the time has to come out of somewhere, so they dedicate a time each week that is their concentrated STEM lesson. And the lesson grows from there and is seamlessly and really naturally integrated into the general science curriculum, English Language Arts, and math. So it happens over the course of the week.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bernadette.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I had one of the same questions. Great minds think alike. And what I was thinking about, because I have heard from parents about who are trying to make the decision between the French Immersion and the English Pathways program, about how much time is designated for this? And it sounds like you had answered it. There's four modules. How many lessons are in each module about?
The lessons aren't like a weekly done, you know, it's not like a tech -- it's hard to answer that question in the way that you asked it. But it's not like a teacher's guide where it says, this lesson is to be taught on this day. The lessons take a long time to complete. So when I said that the lesson begins with a story in the beginning of the module, and then they engage in a variety of hands-on activities, they're never going to want to stop doing them, but the teacher is going to need to move on to something else. And then they pick up the next day, or the day after that, or the next week. So it depends on where the kids.
So you could start the lesson on a Monday, and it might go through your class on Wednesday, but in somebody else's class it might take till Friday?
No, the students typically take the same amount of time to engage in it, but it's not like a one-a-day lesson. It's not like there's one lesson for this week one and one lesson for week two. It's with the thought that this is a -- this project will take multiple days to complete.
Okay. And then, in terms of how much extra time above and beyond, or how many extra lessons above and beyond what they're already getting in the general science? Because that's another issue parents seem to not understand.
Yes. So it's a balancing act between ensuring that every minute of the instructional day is used for a meaningful activity. And that's why we're really, really thoughtful in what we're choosing for the STEM curricula, in ensuring that it's aligned with what they're doing in the general science curriculum, and what they're doing in English Language Arts, and what they're doing in math. Because at the end of the day, if they're getting an extra component, the next question is where are these minutes coming from? And if they're coming from general science minutes, and if they're coming from math or English Language Arts, they had better be addressing those standards, and they had better be closely aligned, and they are. So while the number of instructional minutes remain the same for the subject areas, they might be doing informational writing on some research that they have done related to the nervous system or something like that, whereas maybe the French Immersion teachers have found another way to teach the same concept, if that -- is that coming across clear?
Can I just ask two more questions?
Sure.
Real quick. So examples of that, do those go home to parents, or when parents are trying to make their decision, here's how we integrate it, infuse it into the curriculum, so it's not just a 30-minute lesson? It's this lesson plus da-da-da-da-da-da. Is that a sample of that sent home?
A sample of how the work is integrated. So what we have done last year, what we did is we wound up having a STEM information night.
Yep.
And the first-grade information night, where we were all there collectively. And in my opinion, I felt like that was successful and a nice way to send the same message to all Milton Public Schools' parents, so they're all hearing the same thing. The teachers are well-versed in what they're doing. They're the ones doing it. So when they talk to parents, they certainly are sending the same message in that open house. The question about sending things home, a lot of these materials are reusable. For example, the LEGO We Do Robotics program, these robots and things, they get taken apart at the end of, you know, after they've built and programmed the robot, because those same exact motors and gears in Legos are used to build the next project. So it's a tricky thing to send them.
Well, let me just cut you off for a second. I think because that grade-one night was so successful, that maybe something to look forward going forward would be some mini things like that, maybe at open houses or in people's classrooms, so that parents actually see the project. I'm not saying send Legos home and do all that.
No, right, right.
But that they see the progression of what the projects are. Because I'm really -- parents seem to not be quite getting the full flavor of it.
Okay. When I was learning about Project Lead the Way, I was actually thinking about how the culminating project at the end of each of these modules would be a nice time to invite visitors in or peers, you know, parents or peers in, to see their podcast and present and discuss what they've done.
And then my last question was, what do you think about STEAM?
What do I think about it? I think it's fantastic.
Could you see that in our future?
Do I -- well, I see it currently. There's so much happening, not just in the English Innovation Pathway, but in both programs and at the middle and high school level, that are incorporating that acronym, STEAM, for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And actually, the Milton Foundation for Education's celebration this spring was around STEAM. So we've been coming up with creative and thoughtful ways to integrate more materials and curricula for all students, K-12, that incorporate that.
Great.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Brilla, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to try to go to different sides of the table, but go ahead, Ms. Brilla.
My question is, a lot of parents have asked me about, with regard to STEM, that -- and I noticed that you have made mention to it, English Language Arts. And even at the middle school, like for instance this year, they have a creative writing -- it's under STEM, but it's like a creative writing course, a STEM creative writing course. And a lot of parents, because I'm a middle school parent and a school committee member, have asked me, well, I don't understand that it's creative writing, but it's STEM. But if people are watching, if you could speak a little bit to -- I mean, I know you just said STEAM, which is arts, but if you can talk about, like, the part that, like, English does play, even though it's a science, technology, you know?
Absolutely. Even when you think about general science, just taking a step back and thinking about how general science and English Language Arts and math are related, they're so intrinsically related. You cannot do one without the other. In the general science curriculum, students are constantly writing what they think, making predictions, collecting and analyzing data, looking at and comparing and creating graphs and charts. And the same goes when they're doing these types of STEM or STEAM activities at the elementary, middle, or high school level. Just bringing up examples, like, you know, rooting these STEM activities, I know I just gave some examples for Project Lead the Way, but even just thinking about grade three, grade two, and grade one, and the types of activities they do, and how that ties into English Language Arts and math. In second grade, there is a project where they build a boat, a robot of a boat, that they program to move. So they use the motion sensors, and it moves. And they actually, they program them in their own way to move at a different speed or at a different rate. And then they actually, with their partner, count the number of times that they move left or right, and what things in the program affected that. They create charts and graphs, and they write a story related to it. They do research about severe weather that would affect the way that a boat would travel in the water. So there are -- that's one example, and one robot that they build, but one way that it ties in math and English Language Arts. In first grade, they do -- a lot of their engineering problems are based in children's literature, similar to what I described here. And they go through the process of solving the problem, and a lot of language is involved in that, which naturally lends itself to writing, especially at the first-grade level. And they oftentimes will write an alternate ending to a familiar fairy tale that they've rooted an engineering problem in. And in third grade, the Scratch programming language is like a blank slate in that you can incorporate social studies, history, arts, reading, math into this platform of expressing yourself. So they do things like make digital stories and share them with the class, incorporate what they're learning in social studies into a visual media project that they then share out with their class. So things like that are the ways that we're able to integrate.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker.
This sounds pretty exciting, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad, once again, it seems like we're leading the way. Just a couple of questions for you, and then a couple for the superintendent and assistant superintendent. On the -- let's just talk about the fourth grade this year. So how many hours on general science curriculum, and how many hours on this new leading the way?
Sure. So the fourth grade spends 150 minutes a week on general science curriculum. Until we implement this and see how many minutes each, you know, like I said before, it's hard to tell before we implement it how long these students will be engaged in designing these types of things and engaged in this type of learning. But since it is so supportive of the general science curriculum, it's going to come from those minutes, because it's supporting what they're already doing in science. And again, one of the goals of myself and of our teachers, and what was talked about an awful lot today in the science notebook and professional development, is how we can -- how what they're doing, how what the students and teachers are doing with Writer's Workshop and Reader's Workshop are the same types of skills that the students need to know in the science practices, which are just important, just as important as the content and the standards. So it's something that all of the curriculum coordinators at the elementary level have been working with me, you know? They know all about what this is and how it impacts the math and the English Language Arts curriculum, and I know how it impacts the general science curriculum. You know, it comes mostly from the general science curriculum minutes, but certainly there are genuine overlaps into English Language Arts and math, so the minutes would come from there.
Great. Second, any opportunity to flip the classroom or some other way to provide more individualized instruction, so each student can proceed at his or her own pace, but eventually, we make sure that they grasp the concepts?
With Project Lead the Way?
Yeah.
They work collaboratively in this program, so in saying that they're always working with one partner, but that's because a lot of the scientific practices that we're trying to get to through this program involves collaboration and communication and engaging and argumentation based in evidence.
And good preparation for the workplace as well.
Right, right. So for this type of learning, and in a lot of STEM fields and STEM activities in schools, the work is mostly done in collaboration with peers.
Okay. For the superintendent and assistant superintendent. So we made a decision a couple of years ago, maybe, to move away from the district science coordinator model. But building on the question Ms. Padere asked, I would hope for a better answer on how we plan to accommodate these students who will now be more motivated and more proficient in science as they move to the middle and high school level. I heard Ms. Moon say, you know, we feel like there's some things that they're doing that complement it, but in my mind, that's not a sufficient answer. We'd like, I'd like more integration. And ultimately, I think we've got to make some decisions about what we think is best. I mean, this program, I'm sure there's not one size that fits all or one program that is entirely superior, but if we think this concept and this model is a good one, I'm not sure why we wouldn't implement it at the middle and high school levels. not sure why we wouldn't implement it at the middle and high school levels.
Well, it's interesting, and at a future meeting, if I could prepare an answer for that about the collaboration and speak to all the disciplines, but when Ms. Moonen began to speak, I was going to suggest that, and Ms. Padera alluded to, when we created this STEM strand and we researched multiple elementary programs, I was one of the people that went to Tufts with Ms. Shuretski, I say Ms. Shuretski.
Decker.
Marilyn Decker.
Yeah.
And so Ms. Moonen has worked over the last two years deciding what the fourth grade would be. I have to tell you, we sent her out to three or four different school districts, universities, and to determine where, what direction were we going to go in. And on this particular program, networking with the high school, middle school, and elementary coordinators, the high school science department head was so excited about this program, it really sparked Ms. Moonen to investigate this program. So the collaboration among them, but your question is absolutely right on about the continuum and to what Bernadette spoke to, I compare this to the World Language Program. And when the World Language Program grew, and when you get to the sixth grade or you get to the eighth and ninth grade, so at a future meeting, I would like to address that in each of the disciplines, but go back to the science and how are we going to prepare and prepare one and two years before these students reach the next level. I think Bernadette wanted to follow up, too?
Yeah, so Kristi, Amy, and I did have numerous meetings and conversations when we were trying to decide what the grade four STEM experience would be. And the high school teachers actually, they had received a grant to participate in this STEM certification program. And through that program, they developed, these high school teachers, I think there were six of them, possibly seven or eight, and they developed their own STEM units that was, those were so developmentally appropriate for the high school level and for specific courses that were in the science field. So at the elementary level, where the subject, you know, one teacher is teaching a variety of subjects and where our goal really is integration of various subjects, this type of curriculum makes the most sense for elementary, whereas the program that they're doing at the high school felt more developmentally appropriate for the structure of their classes, where it's so, you know, it's different from the way that the elementary school is.
Well, I think that ultimately, the assistant superintendent for curriculum becomes the district science coordinator. So someone has to provide that oversight and make sure that we have what I call vertical. Yes.
So I just wanted to add that I think that now that we have assessment tools in place or in the, in process, we will be able to monitor more effectively where students are towards meeting the standards. And I think that that assessment data will give us the information that we need as our students transition to the middle school. And I know that when you were talking about individualizing for students, we can use some of that data. And I'm certainly in agreement that this is a program where collaboration is key. But I do see opportunities for collaboration through Google Classroom. So we're already, we already have students who are collaborating with their peers and their teachers from home on projects. And I see that as a possibility as well in the area of science. I do think assessment will be key to how we plan and how we look ahead to curriculum development.
Dr. Donahue.
So several comments, one question. I wanted to thank you for a very succinct presentation. I thought it was excellent. And I also want to thank you for fielding all these questions. I know it's a little tough anticipating what you're going to get asked. I think you've shown a good command of what's going on in your field of focus, and some of your answers have been entirely appropriate, and I think they have sort of pointed us in the direction of where our next tasks lay. Specifically, continued integration from the elementary school level to the middle school level in two academic years or so. I would like to ask you, just to clarify specifically, so the grades one through three STEM curriculum, is Project Lead the Way as well, or it's different?
No, it is not. So the first grade curriculum was developed at Tufts University, and it's the Lego Engineering Curriculum. Project Lead the Way was not developed to the point of adoption at that time. Then in second grade, they are still using Legos as their tools, but using the Lego We Do Robotics curriculum. So they're using the same tools, but focusing more on robotics and beginning stages of computer programming. And then in third grade, they're doing the Creative Computing Curriculum. So it's, they're not Project Lead the Way.
Good. I just want to make sure that we have clarity on that moving forward, that, which, they all sound like excellent programs, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that despite the fact that Project, so even though Project Lead the Way is a K-12 curriculum, we are specifically utilizing the fourth grade curriculum.
That's right.
Okay.
And plan to utilize the fifth grade.
It's, read my mind. So with that, I think, as I said earlier, I'll be interested to see where we are in a year, at the end of the academic year. We will hopefully have some more concrete answers on time on learning, specifically where the minutes for this program are coming. As you said, I anticipate, and as you anticipate, a lot of them coming out of the general science education time budget. But as you also referenced in here, there seems to be a great deal of opportunity for horizontal integration, integration across the curriculum. So it'll be interesting to see where the time ends up coming from after the teachers have had a year or so to sort of work through it. Thank you.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Sorry, I know it's a little off, but I'll, so my takeaway from this is the 150 minutes or whatever the time works out to be, it's not so much as kids in this program get more, it's that they're being taught these subjects in a different manner. It's more hands-on, it's more...
So they are all taught the same general science curriculum, so they're all, you know, using FOSS for their general science curriculum and learning the same topics. The STEM activities that they're doing allows them to apply their knowledge in a different way.
Right, right. So they're not getting more, they're getting different. And that's where I think some parents are not seeing that.
Right, right.
Well, I'm not getting anything more for this, so why am I doing this program? No, it's a different way of learning, just like French immersion is a different way of learning.
Right.
And then the other, so I just wanted to make sure that's clear in my head, so when people ask me about it. And then the other thing was, is a lot of what you described and people's questions were, remind me of things at the high school from the biotech lab, the physics classes that do, I don't think it's called the potato gun, but it's basically a potato gun, and a mousetrap competition. And there's a lot of really great things that kids are doing in the high school that, to me, seem like they fit right in here already, especially in the biotech lab and all the experiments they get to do in that. So there should be some easy pairing up of those things, I would think.
There will be. We've had numerous conversations about it.
Great.
And it's exciting what's to come.
Great, okay, thank you.
Ms. Varela.
I'm sorry, but, so do you think, I know Superintendent Gormly just said that you'll use this for fifth grade, do you think if you really, you know, are happy with it, you might go full K-12 with it eventually, because it's, you know, a K-12 program, or what are your feelings on that?
If, you know, I'm already pleased with what I've seen, I was able to engage in many of the activities. I know that the students will love it, I know that the teachers will love it. We will certainly roll it out into fifth grade when this cohort of students is in fifth grade. It would be a monetary commitment if we were to implement it going back into, you know, into K-1, 2, and 3, when we already have a STEM component in place. And then, like I said before, the middle and high school structure is different from the elementary in that the teachers who are teaching Project Lead the Way or the STEM component are also teaching English Language Arts and math and social studies and all of these different subject areas. Where at the middle school, that's not the case. So the structure of whatever curriculum they choose can and should be in many ways different from what we're doing at the elementary level, because it's more developmentally appropriate for what they're doing. So that would be a conversation to have with Kristi and Amy. And we have had those conversations, and right now, they're really happy with where they are with the curriculums that they have in place, but it's certainly something to continue to discuss.
Thank you.
So just a quick comment, and that is, just to, so everybody's clear on this, you are the elementary science coordinator.
That's right.
And you have brought and initiated an exciting elementary science project and science curriculum to be initiated. And that's, I think everyone at this table recognizing, recognizes that that's an exciting prospect and it's a great, looks like a great program. That doesn't mean that exciting things aren't happening at the middle school and the high school.
Right.
And we've heard from other, we've heard from those science coordinators about iSTEM. We've heard about the biotech lab. So that doesn't mean, so just because you're the elementary school coordinator, doesn't mean that exciting things aren't happening in science and math at the middle school and at the high school.
Oh, absolutely not, great.
And, you know, maybe that's a discussion for another night. So that's my only comment beyond, thank you very much for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moonen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chairman Zulus, now I'll go on to the, our school handbooks. For those members new to the school committee, if I might just give you, frame these school handbooks. Our principals work on these handbooks. Our school attorney edits the handbooks. We were just ironically in policy subcommittee with Member Varela and Donahue. We go, we take our new policies from school committee and assert the policies that are appropriate for staff members and parents and students. So Member Kelly here tonight brought us to the place where we bring these handbooks in front of you. They're electronically sent out, so I would ask you, we had sent them out to you, to assure you that they've been all reviewed, right down to every fine line and every policy by our attorneys, and I would ask for a vote tonight to approve this year's school handbooks.
All right, so why don't we take them individually? Why don't we take the Milton High School student handbook first? Milton High School 2015, 2016 student handbook. So I will move for approval of the Milton High School 2015, 2016 student handbook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Question?
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
You know the word I mean.
If they are, if they are, as I said, it was very timely with policy subcommittee additions of policies that the school committee passed during the year.
Okay.
And the high school has a new cell phone policy, so they're edited and updated.
Okay. Good question. And is the food issue?
Absolutely. Jackie Morgan has part in this.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor for approval of the Milton High School 2015, 2016 student handbook, which has been seconded. Any further discussion?
Discussion? Do we have to do these one by one?
Well, I thought we might, in case there is, there are individual comments, and we did have a comment for the Milton High School one, so we can try to do it quickly, but, and if there's no objection, we can take the next motion, we can take the other five if there's no objection, so.
I'll be lodging a yes vote on each one, so.
All right, all right, so all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, so with that, would there be, is there any objection among the other members to approve the student handbooks in the, the remaining five student handbooks in the aggregate?
No.
Seeing none, I will move for approval of the Pierce Middle School, Polycott Elementary School, Cunningham Elementary School, Glover Elementary School, and Tucker Elementary School, 2015, 2016 student handbooks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for moving that along.
Thank you. The next item was your addition of the Edline follow-up, Chairman Zulus. In the teacher contract, there is Edline teacher expectation, using the web-based Edline program. It reads to, they intend to improve communications between the school and the home. So there's a expectation that teachers will put up syllabus, course description, grading policy, assignments, tests, homework, links to resources, news calendar, and their email address. And so we've had discussions at this table and among the leadership team, so that we are going to assure you tomorrow, all of our new teachers are involved in technology training for the day, and part of that training with Dr. Angela Burke and Bob Patterson and several of our technology teachers. It's individualized instruction all day on many aspects, from GradeQuick, the electronic grading process, to this Edline expectation. In my opening address on Monday and Tuesday with all of our teachers, I'm going to reinforce the importance of communication with the home. My expectation that Edline expectation will be followed, and I've directed our leadership team, principals, and coordinators, we're assigning our curriculum coordinators actual teacher assignments, so that monthly, the, if, the line within our profession, if you don't inspect it, you can't expect it. And so we'll be checking Edline sites, giving teachers suggestions on how to improve these communications, and looking this year at a demonstration, a demo pilot at each level on electronic gradebook, so that we can move into improving our communication with our parents, who only want to keep abreast of their students' progress and know what their nightly assignments are. And so I can assure you that this has reached the top of our expectation list, working with administrators, teachers, and very timely, all of our new teachers tomorrow will be trained on Edline. So that's my update on Edline.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
On the Edline, it's also, students also like to use it a lot, especially on the high school level, which, if we think about our goals about homeschool and school achievement and all of that, if a kid's out sick and they're willing to look it up on Edline and it's not there, then we've lost an opportunity. So I think, I'm glad that you're addressing it with them, Mary, because I do think it's really helpful, and I appreciate you doing that.
Carry that message back.
Mr. Walker.
As you know, Ms. Varela and I have been doing this, so on behalf of myself and Ms. Varela, I'd like to thank Chairman Zulus and the superintendent for bringing this to what I think is a successful conclusion. I'm pleased and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Very briefly, for our happenings, we had one high school student show up for school this morning. To worry. Ms. Sheehan directed him to go home and finish his summer reading. And so for the viewing public, our teachers and staff arrive at school Monday and Tuesday, and I am very proud to tell you that James Jett, our high school principal, attended a seminar this summer at Harvard and heard Tom Hare, who is one of the foremost leaders in research and practice in the world of special education. Jonathan Redden has studied under Dr. Hare, and Dr. Hare has agreed to be our keynote speaker Monday morning for our teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals. And then the remainder of the day, our teachers and paraprofessionals are involved in professional development. All our paraprofessionals will be with our new pupil personnel director in an array of special ed topics ranging from reading IEPs to curriculum issues. On Tuesday, I will address our staff in the morning, along with our attorney, on some of the very topics that were covered here tonight in the handbook and in policy subcommittee. And then our teachers will be involved in targeted professional development. For example, we're implementing a new math program revised at the elementary. Every teacher will be involved in that professional development, the same through the entire district. I want to urge parents and guardians viewing this school committee meeting to go to our website, we have updates. I'll put an email blast out tomorrow, mailed out our, we worked with Member Walker on a refinement of our bus routes, and we've made improvements. So actually, new bus passes were sent out yesterday, Monday. And so Jake Smith has been answering every individual call, transportation, athletics on the web. Every afternoon, you can see a stream of cars with parents, guardians, and students signing up for athletics. The school lunch program, I would encourage parents to go to that link on the school lunch program. I want to report to you tonight that your school committee policy... I want to report to you tonight that your school committee policy initial, our initial year of doing this, having all rising, the parents and guardians of all rising, sixth and ninth graders re-register. We're down to under 90 parents during this last week who haven't re-registered. Those numbers are phenomenal. I want to tell you, I've overheard the response from my office with parents in the outer office, and 99 and a half percent of the parents come in and thank us. We should have been doing this before, and the response. But I want to really compliment Milton parents and guardians. I know how busy they are and committed they are, and in the summer hours. And to our residency coordinator, who's opened every Tuesday night and is here at seven o'clock in the morning to accommodate parents, the system has worked. And so, that's been very successful. This week, we have in-school our new staff members, our new administrators involved in professional development. You heard Ms. Moonin tonight on science networking, our science net, note-taking. And it was a very successful day here Monday, right where you're sitting, our new administrators. And the response was phenomenal. And they are here from dawn to dusk every single day. And I wish every one of you could be there to, and I tell them that they have joined a school district where the town is its schools and its schools are its towns. And it's supported by a very involved, and I said, you have come to a school district where you will get a response from a parent within the day, and there is nothing that you could ask that a Milton Public School parent won't respond to. And so, and I also told them that none of them have been hired without multiple interviews, reference checks, and they have earned those positions. So, for the parents and guardians watching, I think it will be a wonderful integration of new teachers and administrators into the Milton Public Schools. And in the meetings to come, in the weeks and the months ahead, you'll be meeting these new staff members. I want to compliment Assistant Superintendent Sheehan. I'll tell you a little secret. She triple-checks reference checks. She makes more extensive reference checks. And she, she worked very, very hard with our administrators on every single candidate, and she is a, has earned her reputation as a taskmaster in that hiring and interviewing process. I appreciate it on behalf of the district. Tonight, Dr. Spalding at the Pierce welcomed new parents to the Milton Public Schools for our Pierce night tomorrow, on August 31st. These are all in the front of the web, new Milton High School students that will have a fascinating night here with staff and learning about Milton High School. And we have our next school committee on September 9th. And then, after that, I'll list and talk about the open houses that will happen through the month of September. I want to remind parents and guardians who are watching, if any students are watching, summer reading. Just like Assistant Superintendent Sheehan sent that high school a home today to finish his summer reading. We hope everyone kindergarten through grade 12 has their summer reading done and ready to come back and respond to those questions. So, that's happenings. We are, and I want to guarantee you that, I think this was a very long summer, but I had to tell you, it was a very busy summer, and I analogize it to a race, and we're beginning, we're going to pass off the baton. But I will guarantee you the smoothest opening in the Milton, the Milton Public Schools I've ever had, and the most successful opening that they've ever had. So, I hope that makes you feel secure and self-assured, but I can guarantee it. And we're really excited. I can't wait for the students to come back.
It's quite.
Thank you. And teachers.
We can't wait to send them back to you.
And parents and teachers and staff.
It's quite a guarantee, and I'm sure we'll all look forward, with respect to residency, that half a percent who may not have been as complimentary, but I'm sure we'll all look forward to hearing from them. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate the report.
Quick question?
Yes.
So, if a family hasn't gotten their teacher assignment yet, who would they call? Because they would all have them now?
Yesterday, but in the elementary, in the middle, the teacher assignments went out through the U.S. mail. Yesterday, the high school assignments went out through.
Email. They came out today.
Email. Excellent.
Because I got mine.
High school?
Yeah, high school. I just was hearing some questions, so I was just trying to ask politely when they could expect them.
And if, and if, I'm glad you brought up that point. That's a very, very important, that's important to parents and guardians and students. If anyone, tomorrow's Thursday, if anyone hasn't received their parent, their child's teacher assignment, they can call my office.
Thanks, Mary.
Excuse me, did interject kindergarten? Is that inclusive with elementary? I know they start a little later.
Yes, you should have received today in the mail or tomorrow at the latest your child's teacher assignment.
Thank you.
Ms. Bedair.
And middle school?
U.S. mail.
So, that's the same as elementary?
Yeah. Well, no, I actually saw.
There was a little.
Those get, yes, you know what? Good thing you asked for that correction. I saw Dr. Spalding personally bring those to the post office today. So, Pierce Middle School parents should look tomorrow or Friday for those teacher assignments.
Yeah, and just as a Pierce parent, I do know that, just in case anyone watching or we're in the street.
Thank you.
Something happened, I don't know if it's with Edline or whatever, that some kids could go online and find out what team they were on and, but then that was quickly shut down. So, some, you might hear, like June, some of June's friends might know what team she's on, and some may not. So, because they should just go out via post, U.S. mail. But if anyone's watching, that was, like, it's been a little technical difficulties here this week, but, you know, it was rectified and is what it is. Yeah.
One more note that I'm going to surprise Dr. Pavlicek and ask him, this will be very, very valuable to Pierce Middle School parents and guardians. Dr. Pavlicek, will you explain the phone situation?
Yes. Oh, thrilled.
At the Pierce.
At the Pierce Middle School only, the phones suffered a meltdown yesterday in a fairly severe way. The, our phone supplier came in to try to reset the phones and managed to reset them back to 2011. So, you hear James Jett's voice as the principal greeting you. So, we had to have that restored. But the, the system itself is not fixed yet. It was, it's a fairly serious breakdown that may involve dismantling part of it and sending it away for a few days. So, there may be an issue with phones at the Pierce in terms of the menu when you call the main office, in terms of voicemail. And so, what we'll be doing is we'll be putting out alternate phone numbers to contact, to contact the Pierce, by primarily going through central office where we can still contact them. But there will be some issues with the phone tree and so forth at the Pierce. And we'll publicize some ways around it. Hopefully, the company that, that handles the phone systems for the school will be able to rectify it shortly. But they are talking about a fairly serious issue that may involve taking physically part of the computer system out for repair and bringing it back. So, it's not, this is not a simple reset. We're not sure exactly what happened with it, but it has the, the look and feel of a, you know, a serious electrical jolt to the system that did some serious damage to some of the computer systems that run our, run the phones at the Pierce. So, as I say, it's just, we're in the process of figuring out what's on, what's happening with it, where, how, we're going to be able to work around it, rectify it. But the, the electronics company has been in for the last two days trying to, to work on this. But this may be, it may potentially even affect opening day of schools. So, we'll have, we'll have to see what they think they're going to be able to do in the meantime. But it's, it was, it's a very serious failure, but it will take certainly a few days to fix. But we'll publicize some workarounds so people will be able to get in touch.
So, this, so, thank you, Dr. Pavlicek. This was developing all day today. So, we will communicate with the parents and guardians of students at the Pierce School and make our four numbers at central office available with additional staff so that the lines will be open. We'll take any, we'll take the calls, and we'll be in communication with the Pierce School. So, this is a work in action. But Ms. Varela will tell you that Dr. Spalding is in contact with the parents and guardians daily.
Yeah. We received a message that, from Dr. Spalding, that you couldn't leave a message, but that you could call. Is that still correct?
Yes. Yes, but as you, well, to administrative assistants in the Pierce office, you know, if they're on the phone, you can't leave a message.
So, you shouldn't leave a message.
And so, if there's a parent or guardian or any individual who has to get in, ahold of the school, and they're ringing, and they can't get through, we're going to make our four numbers at central office available so that everyone will be able to reach the Milton Public Schools.
And, and, can I just say, and all, all, all teachers and staff can call out, it's just that you can't leave voicemails. And, yeah, I mean, if you call the main number and hit zero, and you're app, you're able to get one of the administrative assistants, then they can transfer you over to Dr. Spalding or any other. But it's just that voicemail, which is pretty popular right now, the week before school, so it's unfortunate. But if there's alternatives, it'll, they're on top of it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the chair's report.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Walker.
So, Ms. Varela seems exceptionally well-informed on this, but, so, what, what's working and what isn't?
The principal issue is voicemail is not working, period. And because, I say, we have multiple lines going in, when you call the Pierce main line, there are actually 12 lines that go into the Pierce on that one number. The default is that if those lines are busy, if the two secretaries are on the phone, or if the, if there's no one picks up immediately, it goes into the hunt for voice, for a menu to say, you can dial this, you can dial that. Well, as of today, that menu wasn't working either. So, if you call and someone's in the office and they're not already on the phone, they'll pick it up and you'll get through. But if they are on the phone, it will seem like no one's home. It will just ring. And that's the circumstance that we want to give people a backup for. I mean, you could obviously just call again in a few minutes, but that doesn't necessarily always do the job. So, it's, it's, it's what's called the hunt group. That's, that's a problem, and the voicemail. Voicemail is, is out completely at Pierce, but the fall back into the menu-driven hunt for, you know, you've, you know, you've reached the office, if you want so-and-so, dial zero, that is not working either at the moment.
And within the school, teachers are able to communicate with the central office and vice versa?
Right. Which is why we call central office. We have the individual extensions. We can make the, the extension-based calls because we know what all the, the individual extensions are for all the different offices. If you can get into the school, you can make any calls at all within the school. We can transfer to anyone. The problem is just reaching, in certain circumstances, the main office at the Pierce right now can be, can be problematic.
And were you given any sense of how long this will take to be fixed?
Yesterday, they were talking, if they had to take a piece out, it could be six days. We're not, we're not sure about that yet. They're still doing diagnostics on it, trying to find out what's going on. They were trying to reset it with various software techniques. They're trying to replace various pieces. But if they actually have to take a particular hard drive out and try to repair it, it could be a number of days because it can't be done on-site.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Ms. Bedair.
If, if you're calling into the Pierce and you know the extension, if you don't get the, you know, you're not getting the mail that says if you want, if you know the extension, will it transfer that person? Will that work?
It won't pick up for you to put the extension in. If you can, if you, if it's an extension, it can be direct-dialed from outside. You can do that.
Is there, is there?
Generally, you dial into the main number, and the, the extensions are local extensions inside.
Okay.
And so, you have to basically get into the system.
You have to get there. So, you can't do that? We couldn't just tell people?
Right.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. Moving on to the chair's report, one item, the FY16 school committee goals. Just as a, as a quick backdrop, under our policies, the school committee is charged at the outset of the school year to establish a short list of strategic goals and related objectives for the committee for that year. To that end, this committee met on Friday, August 7th, in the afternoon with the, with the administration. And, and we met and had a meeting that was facilitated by Jake Olivera, who was the incoming president of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And the result of that meeting, which, which went for just about two and a half hours, was a list of four goals that this committee has developed, developed at that meeting. And the purpose now is, if we can, if we can, to, to vote on those goals as the goals for the committee for this year. Do you have those up, or do we?
Yeah.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So, the four goals are on the screen. The first goal is to develop a plan to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten by January 2016. Second goal is to develop a plan to assess current and future space needs by June 2016. The third goal is to review and investigate new methods of effective communication by the school committee administration and administration with recommendations by spring 2016. And the fourth goal is, is to develop a strategy to address the special education proficiency gap. Those are the four goals that we developed during that session. So, we can do this, seems to me, one of two ways. We can either vote them all, as we did with the yearbooks, or we can take them individually to the extent that there may be further discussion and tweaks. So, the floor is open. Does, do we have any thoughts on whether we want to take these individually or in the aggregate? Dr. Donahue.
I'm, I'm happy to pursue either way. I, I have a comment and a possible amendment on the first of the four, so I don't know if that informs anyone else's thoughts on whether we take them individually or as a group.
If, if that's the case, why don't we take the first one?
Sure.
And then, see how we go from there if we're going to have comments and discussions. So, why don't we take the first one? And that is develop a plan to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten by January 2016. So, the floor is open. Dr. Donahue.
So, I would, I would point out to inform those who weren't, our listening audience, viewing audience, that the, the purpose of this goal was to develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten, not to introduce tuition day, tuition-free full-day kindergarten by that time point. So, I might suggest, move, that we, we move the last three words, "by January 2016," up into the first line, so it reads, "to develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten."
So, I think that's a very good suggestion. And, and, so, why don't we, so I'll move to accept the, the goal as amended by Dr. Donahue, "develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten." Do I have a second?
She's seconded.
Second by Ms. Varela. So, any, any discussion? Doc, Dr. Walker, Mr. Walker.
So, I know that we, these were completed in the last part of our planning session. I don't, I don't think this accurately describes what, what we intended to do. I agree with Dr. Donahue, but it, we didn't, we haven't made any decision to offer tuition-free kindergarten. This suggests that we might have made that decision. We haven't. So, building on Dr. Donahue's suggestion, I would say that what we agreed to do is to complete an assessment of the, and we can either put the "by January 2016" right after that or at the end, but complete an assessment by January 2016 of the options for a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program. And by that, I mean, as you know, we had an extensive discussion about cost, about an $850,000 first-year cost. We haven't resolved any of that, and we don't need to. I think, I think the idea was, we would look at the possibilities or the options, including how we might address those cost issues by January 2016.
I would agree with that, as, as I felt very strongly about this, I'm sure you remember. But is there something about there that we could say, assess, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting we say, "complete an assessment of the options," because that's really all we agreed to do.
But also to assess the options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Assess the options, complete an assessment, however we want to say that. But I, I think that's a more accurate description of what the body agreed to at that planning session. We had a lot of discussion about options and about possibilities, but we certainly didn't, didn't reach any conclusions or agree. didn't, didn't reach any conclusions or agreements on how we would end up. That was the point. We were going to look at options.
Ms. Padere.
I, I don't, I know there's some disagreement in that, but I'm not sure if I agree with that change, just because I don't, I felt like there was more stronger belief in that this was something we, we should, we should, we didn't want to be left behind, and that a lot of other people were offering tuition-free full-day kindergarten, and that was something we, some of us felt really kind of strongly about moving to offer. So I'm just a little worried that you're, I think we've already looked at options for the last couple of years, but I thought we were moving in the direction that this was something we should move towards, developing a plan to do. So I'm in a little bit disagreement on that, and I know that we weren't all on the same page, and we talked about it at length. But from where I was hearing the discussion, that this was something we've been looking at options for a long time, and that we were going to try to move forward to do that, if fiscally possible, without, you know, demolishing some other programs and things like that. Obviously, every year, we look at our fiscal budget and, and set priorities. But much like some of our other goals, this was something that we set as one of our four goals there. And it was, I don't know, like, if looking at options is strong enough in the goal for me, in terms of, I think, the developing a plan, I'm fine with the January 2016. I think we can, I think developing a plan is more strong of where I thought we were going. That, that's my opinion on it.
I think it's-
Ms. Varela.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, I, I think the issue is with, or what I think some of the members are leery about, is, is the cost, and is the $850,000 that Mr. Walker made note to. So, I think that, and I think that if we say, "Well, we're going to develop a plan," but if, if we say, "We're going to develop a plan, but we can't secure or cement the fact that the town, based on what maybe the Warren Committee would give us, or, or what we could maybe assess in an override," you know, you know, the different ways in which, where are we going to pull the money from, you know, that's not so cemented right now, that I don't know if we can say we're definitely going to be able to develop a plan, because the cost is the issue for, you know, I mean, in a nutshell, it's like, can we take the hit that first year so that after that, we, it'll be okay? So, so I, I don't know, I, I, for me, I would, if I, if I felt more secure that what, what, what we could, what we could be given in the regular town budget, and then what we would have to, like, come up with, and maybe perhaps an override or whatever, to be able to pay for that first year, then yeah, then you develop it or whatever. I, or I don't know if developing it is the money, you know, I mean, because it really is the money, right? It's all about the money. So, there's, right now, it seems, I think that's why people are saying, "Well, do we assess or do we develop?" Because in assessment, we're going to be assessing what our financial options are, but developing is saying that we can definitely do it. And as much as I think we all would like to do it, I just want to know that we, we have a better, secure understanding of where, where the money is coming from, or where we'll be able to pull it from, I guess. That's all, if that makes sense.
So, my view is, I, I think this language is the language that we discussed at the meeting. And, and I will say that my view is that it's important, if we think this is an important goal, to develop a plan in parallel with determining whether it's included in the budget, and how it's included in the budget. Just because you develop a plan doesn't mean you necessarily can implement it. And so, my view is that if we wait, and until we know what the funding will be and how the funding will shake out, we will miss the bus on this.
Right.
My view is, in addition to that, I think, you know, as Becky mentioned, I, you know, some of us feel pretty strongly about this, and, you know, we've discussed it before, how this is one area where I think this district is behind. Because the great majority of districts in this Commonwealth, and the trend in this country, is to allow, to offer a 13-year public education program, and we don't do that right now. And so, so, so I, I would tend, as, as Becky would, to, to go with the language that we discussed, discussed at the, at the, at the retreat. I think this is the language. And so, so that's my, my view on it. So, there's a motion pending. Because I think this is the language, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept it as a friendly amendment, the revision, because I, because I do think this was the language. But, but if the members want to reconsider this, and have language presented, we could, we could table this until the next meeting, if that's what, if people want to, if the members want to consider this alternative language, we can table this until the next, until the next meeting. That's, that's one thing we do, or we just go ahead and vote on it. So, so the floor is open.
Is the motion on the table?
Motion's pending, to develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten. Mr. Walker?
I, I think that in a year where we're going to be developing a contingent and non-contingent budget, that is, a budget if an override passes, and a budget if one does not, and with the very clear understanding of what the impact last year was of a $500,000 cut, and some of us looked at the implications of a $1 million cut, I think it's irresponsible to say, "Well, we have this $850,000 problem, but we're going to develop a plan nevertheless." It has, it has to be, it has to be a process where that's considered as part of this discussion. And I, I understand, and, and probably agree, that a nice objective would be to have a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program. But I think I, and, and all of you would agree, that, you know, if, if the cost of that is $850,000, I think we would all want to see the trade-offs that would be required for us to do that. Because frankly, if that means laying off more teachers, if it means all sorts of implications, then, then I'm not in favor of that. So, I, I think, I, I don't want to go back and forth about whether, and, this is or isn't the language we agreed to, but what I will say is, this, this doesn't capture the full range of the discussion that we had. And therefore, I think that we need to create some language here, and we can easily, yes, there's a motion on the floor, but we can move to reconsider that. I, I think we need to create some acknowledgement that the cost issue, as Ms. Varela said, is the, the, the big issue here, the elephant in the room, and that we've got to acknowledge that that consideration is part of the process, particularly in an override year.
Ms. Varela.
So, the other thing, all excellent points, I think, that everybody's making. But, and I understand that, you know, in some ways, because of the timeliness of it, I could see how, as a district, we would want to develop a plan, say, like, on a, you know, a contingent budget. So if we get, you know, like, we, there's a, there's a plan in place so that if we got, if we got the funding needed, we could then implement, right? So there's that. The, the only problem with not developing the plan that I think we need to think about is that, on a state level, Governor, I was going to say Governor Weld, but Governor Baker, they look, they look like brothers, I think. Governor Baker, you know, I do think is not going to, as we've been reported to by our officials, it's not, it's not, this grant is not staying that, around that much longer. And that's the other issue that we have to think about and deal with, so that if we have, if we have no plan in place, and, and then next year, no matter what, you know, Governor Baker says it's off the table, and then the funding is gone, it, you know, you, it basically, it was there to get it started. And the unfortunate thing in our town, and I know we're behind the eight ball, but again, we don't have any commercial tax base, which is our biggest issue ever. And that's, that's the biggest reason why we are behind the eight ball, because it, it is very costly to, to put it in, right? So, I, I'm, I'm torn because I'm, I would be willing to say that I would want to develop a plan and, and assess it and work on it. But, but, but yes, I, it would, it would be to develop it with no guarantee that it would absolutely be starting in the school year of September 2016. Because if we don't have the money for it, you know, if we don't have the money for it, and unfortunately, if Governor Baker doesn't, you know, does what he did, did this year, and we don't have the money, and it costs, it is what it is. I mean, we can work our best to see, you know, the town will see what happens with the override and everything else. But that's the only other issue, that if we, we don't have a plan in place, and we don't get the grant, you know, I see the value in putting a plan in place, but yes, I, I, especially somebody who feels as though the middle school and the high school got decimated this year compared to what the elementary, every, every single thing except for one preschool issue got put back into the budget for the elementary. And I just, I'm also very heightened to the awareness that no major cuts can be made at the middle school or high school level to implement, like you said, teacher cuts, whatever, this. As much as I'm for it and want it, there's the reality, there's the want and there's the reality.
Ms. Padere.
Just one more thing. I think we've done, I just, I think we, the way we do things all the time is we, we're setting these goals, we're trying to develop a plan, it's one of our priorities, and that's the way we look at it. There are a lot of goals that we've looked at the last couple of years, that we've looked at and set priorities without knowing exactly physically what the impact's going to be. We look at those things later. We voted on a complete advancement budget last year without knowing what those impacts were going to be until later. And nobody, some people didn't have a problem with that. So looking at this and setting our priority, it's a goal. It does not mean that we're going to do it above all else. It's a goal, and we're developing a plan. I think, and that's, I think, what we talked about in that meeting. There was certainly some more concerns fiscally, all of us have concerns fiscally, and there was definitely some disagreement on, on what that would mean. But it doesn't mean that we're going to put aside the entire school district just to, in, to put this forward. It just means it's one of our goals, and it's a priority, and we want to develop a plan on how to put this in place. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing that without knowing, nobody knows what the fiscal situation's going to be this year yet.
Mr. Walker?
So, let me try for a friendly amendment.
Let me get my pen.
Develop, develop a plan to assess the cost and program implications of tuition-free full-day kindergarten by January 2016.
Implications.
Develop a plan to assess the cost implication, cost and program implications of tuition-free full-day kindergarten by January 2016.
I like that.
So, if we're developing a plan to assess, we're developing, developing a plan to assess the cost and the program implications. So we're not developing a plan to introduce it. So we're taking a step back. So, that means if the committee decides that it is a priority in the budget, when making those determinations next, well, late this fall and throughout the spring, we won't have a plan to introduce. We will just have a plan to assess the cost and the program implications. So, in, in my view, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't achieve the goal, which is a plan to introduce. Now, I will say, and so I, so I, so I wouldn't accept the amendment based on that, because, you know, I, I don't think in any sense it's irresponsible to develop a plan to introduce something without necessarily having a plan for implementation, and deciding whether you're going to implement. And you're certainly, we're certainly not precluded in, by this goal, from deciding, "Well, we have a plan to do this, but when we weigh the budgetary necessities, when we're weighing the budgetary necessities, that plan doesn't rise from the top, rise to the top." We're certainly not precluded by this goal from doing that. So, so, so based on that, I, I think if we're just developing a plan to assess the cost and the program implications, we're sta, we're taking a step back, I think. Then, then certainly what, what my goal, personal goal was, and, and what I thought the group was, the language the group was interested. Now, that doesn't preclude us certainly from changing that. I'm not, I, I agree with you, Leroy, we shouldn't quibble about the words. If people want to change the words, but, 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 but that doesn't accomplish the, the goals certainly that I personally thought we, thought we were talking about and, and interested in. So based on that, I, I wouldn't accept that, that amendment. Ms. Varela.
What if, and I'm, I'm not good with language, like, like you are, or Dr. Donahue's very good with language, so maybe he might even think of something again. But, what if, if we do something like develop a costing plan? Because the issue is, we already have full-day K. It's not like we have to implement full-day K. It's already, it's there. It's just, how do we pay for it? But that's all it is. It's like, how do we come up with a plan to pay for it? How much is it going to cost? So it's, it's about cost. So I'm assuming that the plan would have to be, how do we afford it? And then you put it together, and then if all goes well, like you, like you and Becky both said, then we can move forward. And if we can't, right, for next year, then we can't. But it's really about a costing plan, how do we afford it? Am I right or am I wrong on that?
I think that's what this says.
It says, it, it seems to be more like we're going to do it no matter what.
It says tuition-free. It doesn't say how to develop a full-day kindergarten plan. Everything, everything on this list could have fiscal ramifications.
So I, I would say, Sheila, on that, that that might be too limiting, to just say, "Well, we're just going to talk about the cost and nothing else. We're just going to develop a plan with respect to cost." It may be more than that. It doesn't, it doesn't preclude us certainly from, from, you know, developing a plan with, and maybe the cost is the primary, or maybe it's the sole thing. I don't know that that's true. There may be other aspects of it. And so, so I think that's a little bit too limiting.
Okay.
You, you might say, develop a plan to do, we might say, "Develop a plan to reduce tuition-free, develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition full-day, tuition-free full-day kindergarten," which will, which will include an assessment of the costs?
And program implications.
Which will include, yeah, which will include a, an assessment of the costs and the program implications? Yeah, I would, I, that, that, how do you feel about that, Leroy?
Not particularly well, but-
All right, okay.
I-
That's fair.
You're pointing at me, but I can leave.
I think, thanks. I think, I think we're overthinking this. This is, and as Sheila points out, this is all about the cost. Philosophically, I think we're all there. Nobody's saying, "No, I don't, I don't want to offer tuition-free full-day kindergarten." So this is all about the cost. And frankly, we'll have to figure this out, not by January 2016, but by December 1st, because we're going to have, we're going to submit contingent and non-contingent budgets by then. You'll see that on the schedule that I'm going to ask you to vote on in a few minutes. But, so, how about assess the cost feasibility of offering tuition-free full-day kindergarten, and make a decision as to whether include a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program in the fiscal '17 budget by December 1st, 2016?
Say that again. Assess cost feasibility?
Assess the cost feasibility of tuition-free full-day kindergarten program, and make a decision as to whether include a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program in the fiscal '17 budget by December 1st, 2016. That's really the schedule we're on. That, we're going to have to decide by then. This is not a, this is not a discussion and, and analysis that's going to occur outside the budget process. So why don't we just acknowledge that and say, "We'll make a decision. We'll look at the cost, which is all we need to figure out, but $850,000 is a big figure out. So let's acknowledge that. We have to do it. We have to, and we have to make that decision in accordance with our decision about the fiscal '17 budget. So let's just, why don't we just say that?"
So- So, so, so for me, that's kind of a wholesale change in, in what, what, what we would be doing and what we, what the goal would be, so, so I'd want time to think about that, frankly, rather than just do it here. And based on that, I'd, I'd rather go forward with, with this goal that we discussed over several hours, or a couple hours, a couple weeks ago, but, so, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to move forward with, with this goal, and Kristen, what do you have to say?
I just wanted to add something to it, is that I, actually, Mike, I would respectfully disagree with you with this, when I saw this, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, that's not what I remember, and I could, we could have a difference or whatever, but when I see introduce tuition-free by January 2016, if I'm a parent coming in and I want to know about this, I read this, and I go, oh, they're going to have tuition-free kindergarten.
Yeah, I do too.
I don't feel comfortable with that because of the cost, of course, I mean, we already have full-day K, of course, we all want full-day K, of course, we all, it would be great to have free full-day K, but at what cost? And so, that's what my concern is, I feel like it would be like making a decision with my eyes closed. Yes, let's do kindergarten, and I don't feel comfortable with that because of the cost of it. So, to say, develop a plan, the next one says, develop a plan to assess, the next one says to investigate, develop a strategy, so a plan that just feels very specific and it's time-bound, it's January 16, to introduce tuition-free, I want an analysis of it and then make the decision. I just don't feel comfortable with this at all in terms of the tuition-free by January 2016.
So, so, again, you know, in my view, that would be taking a step back from certainly where I would want us to be and where I thought we were in the, in the meeting, and so, you know, if, if, if the committee has a different memory, and, and we can check the minutes, when, you know, the minutes when they're, when they're done, we could do that, but, but for my purposes, I think it's important, and I thought the committee was, there was consensus in the committee, and certainly Leroy thought there was consensus in the committee that we're all for this, right? And so, we're all for this, and it's going to be a decision as to whether it should be included in the budget, what happens if it's included? Do we have a plan? Or have we just, have we just talked about assessing, developing a plan to assess the costs and to assess the implications? So, so, so I, you know, I, I guess I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm a little bit bewildered by the fact that if we develop a plan to introduce something, we're then bound, despite the cost, to, to implement it. I don't think we are, I don't think that was the intention, I don't think that's what this says, this just says, this is a goal for this committee, we think it's important to introduce tuition-full-day kindergarten, and so, we're going to develop a plan to do that. Sheila.
Yeah, but I, I have to agree that the language, if, again, if I moved into the town and I had a two-year-old and a four-year-old, and I went, and, and, these are on the Milton Public School website, and I went and I saw what the goal, what the, went under the school committee choice and saw this, I would definitely think like, oh, wow, it's going to be tuition-free kindergarten in 2016. And I think that the verbiage is, this is, again, want it, but I think the verbiage could be misleading, and I think that the parental community who moves here, you know, with the young family, said, oh, gosh, you know, I, I just assumed it said it would be that, you know, it says, develop a plan, but, I don't.
To introduce.
To introduce, yeah, to introduce, so that, the, the verbiage is, I agree that, you know, I, I agree that the verbiage is just not being transparent to the community that cost is an issue. And, and I, I mean, I agree with you to a point that, you know, it's not just about cost, but we've had full-day K for, I don't know, how many, 11 years now, maybe 12 years? I mean, we have the program in place, it's just that we don't have enough money to pay for it so that it can be free. So, so I'm not saying it's, it's not continually tweaked and all, but it is about the money, and so, I, I would definitely be on board to say that we would, you know, to develop, to develop a plan, I know I use the word costing plan, but I don't think it's a step back, I think, because I think if, if we, if, if we voted on this verbiage that I know that you're very passionate about, it would still be about finding out how to pay for it, do you know what I mean? Really, I mean, it could be, okay, maybe we do a pathway, you know, like the pathway in the kindergarten level now or whatever, but really, it's about how do we pay for what we have now, which is a very good kindergarten program. So, I just think, speaking about the money makes us more, more transparent to the community at large, and I think having transparency this year and honesty to the parental community as a whole is a very important thing.
So, based on that, Sheila, I will amend my motion to say, develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten, which will include an assessment of the cost and program implications. So, that's the motion as amended.
Can you say that again, Mike?
So, and again, if, 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 if the members feel uncomfortable, then I, with, with the language, I don't like to wordsmith real-time, and so, I'll, I'll give it to you, Kristen, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm actually, I'm going to actually take my motion off the table because I think we need to see the language more. So, what, what the language that I would suggest is, develop a plan by January 2016 to introduce tuition-free full-day kindergarten, which shall include an assessment of the cost and program implications.
I agree.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I, I, I like, I like that language better, and I, I think it's a good idea to, to take this off the table at, at the time, I, I think we've sort of, we've sort of had another microcosm of the discussion that we had at the, the planning, the goals meeting about this topic, and I think there is consensus, a great deal of consensus, that this is a, a very strong priority, we just, we just need to feel comfortable with the language that we're putting out there, that we convey, that this is not, or at least we have not committed to the decision, that this is the most important budgetary priority going forward into the budgeting season. So, I think.
So, I will withdraw my motion, I will ask each of the members, if you have language that you would suggest to tweak this, send it to me, and I will circulate everything I receive before the next meeting. Okay?
Perfect.
All right, so, moving on, the next goal that is listed here is, develop a plan to assess current and future space needs by June 2016. So.
With approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval of this goal, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Varela seconds, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I have a question that goes to all of them, actually, when we look at the SMART goals, you know, specific, measurable, blah, 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 when we approve these goals, which I think they're great and we did a lot on them already, do we then at some future point say, okay, who's going to develop that plan? Who's, I mean, do we then line people up for each goal, and when do we do that process?
Yeah, I mean, my view is that we, we assign these to the appropriate committees, and if we don't have a committee that's appropriate, that we, we create a subcommittee to, to address these things.
Okay, so each goal would either be part of an existing subcommittee or a new subcommittee to address the goal? That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think that's right, I mean, I, you know, look, we want to, we want to keep track of these things, and we want to make sure that we do them, so.
Right.
So, I think that's the only way to do it, is to delegate it out.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Mr. Walker, did you have a?
I was actually going to speak to that, I, I think that, for that goal, the facilities subcommittee would be, I thought, the logical place for that to reside, although I, I think in some cases, my view would be, and this is, this is what another part of the discussion we had, I think we want to be careful about creating any goals that create additional work for the superintendent, because we're in the middle of an evaluation cycle, so that would be kind of changing the rules midstream. But that being said, I think that I agree with the chair that we, we should be clear about those instances where, in fact, the school committee has responsibility or the superintendent has responsibility.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Did we, was that your name or mine's?
Van Almsen.
Oh, okay, I missed your, I missed your arm, okay, so we have one, and now.
Nice job.
We have one. I almost want to declare victory and go home.
That would be my recommendation.
All right, the third one, review and investigate new methods of effective communication by the school committee administration with recommendations by spring 2016. Mr. Walker.
All right, so, I, I, I have no idea what this means. If, if this alludes to a conversation that we had several months ago, where there was some discussion about the school calendar decision, and we said, well, why don't we have the superintendent look at that and come back with recommendations in the spring? If that's what this alludes to, then I would say, we already addressed that, and we've already got a plan, and we don't need it to be a goal. If that's not what it alludes to, then, then I'm a little bit mystified as to what this addresses and what the problem is or the challenge here is that we're trying to solve. Are there some communication issues that we identified? Because I don't, I don't remember a discussion about this at the retreat.
I do, yeah.
Well, it, it, it came from a retreat, I can tell you that, and so, Ms. Padere.
So, I think there were a couple different people talking about it, it was one of those things where they came out as a result of a couple comments, then we grouped them together. I, you know, and other members can correct me if I'm misstating what the other goals were, how they came into it, but one of the things I had talked about that got grouped into this was having, you know, look at the way we communicate some of the important details this year, especially park, park results, not just park results, but how we test and why we test, and how much time is spent on it, because there seems to be a lot of information out there and people getting the wrong information, maybe we need to look at how we communicate that to make sure we have better attendance and that our parents are getting the information we want them to have. And then, there was some discussion on how some people aren't making use the information the way we send it out, and we've talked about different methods, maybe having these videos on our website so people could get them readily when they miss a meeting, if, if these, if we have meetings that aren't well-attended, how do we get that information out in different ways? There was some discussion on EdLine, I think, a little bit, that was grouped in there, correct? So, that was the discussion, I remember it, I remember it, it did happen at the retreat.
I remember that too.
Okay.
And there was also some discussion about, and trying to be more communicative about some of the things we're doing for our talented and gifted students. But, I would suggest as well that we, we take some time, more time on this, because if, if that's what we're talking about, then from a SMART goal perspective, that's what we should say. This is, this is much too general and much too vague to, to either measure or to know whether we were successful in spring 2016.
Well, it's, I, I'm just to suggest, it's, it's not too vague to, to know whether we have recommendations by spring 2016, but.
But are there going to be recommendations on?
New methods of effective communication. Ms. Varela.
So, this, this stems from the fact that we live in a technology age, and unfortunately, even, as I would say, 30, 40, and 50-somethings don't have a good attention span. So, I think that really and truly, that it is what it is, and, and we have to investigate other, you know, it, it's about investigating other avenues we might take to get extremely pertinent information out to parents, other than, for an example, the superintendent's, you know, email blog that she goes out, that she gets out, so that, there's so much information and the, the feedback that, that I and many other people have gotten is that even though the information is fabulous, it's lengthy, and people don't take the time to read it. And then, if they don't take the time to read it and something happens, i.e., I'll use the example of the change that we, that school committee did about the holidays, you know, people said, nobody knew anything about it. We've got to maybe perhaps, because of the given technology age that we live in, maybe investigate other methods of really pertinent and important stuff of, of, of meetings, of whatever, how to get it out there, maybe it's more, more email shout-outs a week, and just, just for that, there's going to be a special park overview, how do we do it, how do we work with the PTOs, with, with communication, like almost a marketing and communication from, from the school committee and the administration to the parent community at large, because it's a sad state, but a large percentage of parents don't read email and definitely don't read lengthy emails. So, it's just to look about how we raise awareness and get, get an awareness from the parent community about pertinent issues that they need to know about. That's, that's what I thought it stemmed, stemmed from.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I think that the communication issue came up, it's, and I would, they're a little bit differently than Ms. Varela, where I would say, I think that the email blast is quite successful. Mary, how many years have you been doing that? Mary?
About seven years, I think.
Yeah, and, I mean, I've had parents say to me.
They do.
No offense to anyone in the audience, but.
I've had parents say, I canceled my Milton Times because I read Mary's email blast.
Don't repeat that, but, like Mary says, I'll tell, I'll let you in on a little secret. So, I think that when you're interested and motivated and you know it's there, it is a fabulous communication tool, and it was introduced seven years ago and it served a great purpose. In addition to that, there are, are some other ways with social media that we got to get with the Times, myself included, maybe we need to use some Snapchats, kidding, I'm kidding. So, I, I think, you know, leaving that in place, but looking at social media, looking at EdLine, we now have a new channel, right, for school committee, or a channel for school committee stuff, are we really efficiently using that? We have a crazy budget year coming up, do we want to have Glenn do some budget lessons on school committee, um, channel, things like that, to just brainstorm maybe and make sure that there aren't other things that we could, as the school committee, not necessarily the superintendent, because she's already doing her communication, but are there things we want to see happen? That's what I thought the communication thing was about.
All right, Ms. Padere.
I was just asking, has, has anybody moved to approve this?
No, we haven't, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, so, so it appears that we do, we do have a memory of the discussion, certainly, and.
I would move approval.
And I'll second that, any, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I got distracted by a note from the audience that I, I feel compelled to say, can I say something?
Yes, please.
There are no foils in the email blast, the Times does create memories. I just wanted to be on record for saying that, and that I love the Milton Times.
There you go.
I read it religiously.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded, any further discussion?
What was the motion?
The motion is to approve the goal.
I'm out, a second. I'm sorry, we have to vote on it.
A second, and any further discussion? No further, no further discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm opposed simply because I, I think it lacks the clarity that a SMART goal needs.
Okay, so, five in favor and Mr. Walker opposed. The next one, develop a strategy to address the special education proficiency gap. The floor is open.
Well, for one, I would add by June 2016, since we need a time measure. Uh, June 2016.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
When I look at that, and of course, I'm totally in agreement with it, I'm not sure why we don't have all of our subgroups proficiency gaps up there. I know we're doing the special ed year, what do you want to call it, the year in?
Program review.
Program review, right, but, so, I don't remember discussion about why this was just the special education proficiency gap.
If, if I could interject.
Dr. Don.
This gets into a comment that I was, I was going to make for the second page of this press. this presentation, but I believe it was because on the second page of our handout, we have the previous year's goals, which we in large part readopted. And I think the third one down...
Yep.
...addresses that in a more robust manner. So, this was meant to complement that, I believe.
Thank you. And as a point of communication around this, if that can just be somehow clarified, when we go to the second page, it says 2014-15 goals, and there's some dates that have already passed or will pass shortly, and we're looking at the, these as continuous goals, right? We're still working on these. Can it just say that? Make me feel happier, continuing?
I had a, a thought about that, but I was going to wait until...
Yeah, can we, can we...
Just because they're connected to the special education?
Okay, but can we, can we just focus on this, this goal and then we can talk about the, the second page if we need to? So, does anybody have a motion with respect to this goal?
I'd move approval.
Ms. Bedair has moved approval, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? And with the, with the amendment by June 2016?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, no, can I have discussion? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I know we talked about, I guess I know we talked about it, but I guess I'm confused a little bit about what our role as a school, the school committee is to develop a strategy to address the special education proficiency gap when, over the summer, we've done a whole review of the special ed program and then I was assuming that this year would then, you all would be implementing things that you've learned from the review. Am I incorrect? Maybe I'll address that to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. So, if, I would assume that, do they learn anything from that or?
The review's going to start now?
Huh?
The review, the program review, the special education program review?
Starting this year. Okay, this, okay, all right.
September.
Okay. So, I, I don't know, I mean, if it started, if the review is starting, it's like, I, I know it's a review of our program, but I think that it would work in tandem to, if we're reviewing our special ed program, you know, the district is, and then from that, we would develop a strategy to address special education proficiency gaps, because it's proficiency gaps that we have in our program, right?
Right.
You know, so, I, I...
So, June 2016 gives...
But is it us? But what I'm saying is, isn't it, I'm sorry, I never get her title correct, the director of personnel?
People Personnel.
People Personnel, I'm sorry. But wouldn't it be the, the people personnel directors?
People Personnel.
Pupil, I'm sorry.
Services.
I apologize. Pupil Personnel Director's job to kind of lead what, what the, the, to lead, I'm sorry, to lead the address, the, the fact that we have to address them. I, I guess that's what I'm, how do we work in tandem with them? Because it's really not our job to do that, it's the pupil personnel director's job, I think, to lead that way. Am I incorrect in that?
I think it's the director of pupil personnel services role, assistant superintendent curriculum and instructions role and the superintendent's role. Ultimately, we have a responsibility, as we do with all proficiency gap issues, that, to make sure that we're doing everything we can, but it's the superintendent's job.
So, so I, I don't know if, and I, I know it's late and I hate to belabor it, but I don't know if it's our job to develop it or is it, you know, to ensure that the, the special education proficiency gaps are addressed by, by January 2016 or June 2016? It's really like...
So, Sheila, if I may, from, from the school committee perspective, we have, we have three primary roles, right? And that is budget, oversight of the superintendent...
Right.
...and policy.
Right.
And communication...
Right, right, right.
...related to that. So, when I look at this goal that we discussed and we, we, we addressed on two weeks ago, I think about a strategy in terms of resources. What are the resources we need? How do we do that to be?
Okay.
And what are the, how do we direct the right resources there? So, I don't, I don't think, I don't think of it in terms of us developing the program, that's clearly not our role. We're not, we have, we don't have the actual expertise, but we have control over the resources.
Okay, okay.
So, that's the way I look at it.
All right, it's good conversation, thanks.
Mr. Walker.
The only thing I would add to that is that I agree and I would expect that the superintendent would propose a program and a strategy that includes both the overarching strategy, the resource needs, and, and all of the other things that, that might go with that. And we say, "Yes, we agree, yes, we agree with this, no, we don't."
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
To me, from a school committee point of view, if I look at the other page where it says, "Develop a comprehensive plan for all students in grades C, blah, 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 blah," to me, when I look at the issues that we've had around special education issues and parents in that community who have felt, I, I would look at it more as not around programs and resources, but around what are we doing to have an inclusive approach? Just like we all agree that we really want free, full-day kindergarten is a tangible issue, we all would agree, I assume, that we want inclusionary practices to really benefit our community. So, that doesn't really say that for me, and so in retrospect, thinking about this, I want the special education community, folks who have children in that community to feel like they are a part of the rest of the educational community. To me, that's what that goal is, but I don't know how to say it or wordsmith it.
Right.
Versus proficiency gap. We're working on that with programs and resources.
Yeah, I have to say, I think that's a different, a different goal than the one that we, we discussed, and it doesn't mean we can't, doesn't mean we can't discuss it, but I think it is different, so I, so I would like to try to keep on this one and then if people want to suggest additional ones, we can certainly do that. So, so I believe we have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded with respect to this goal. So, any further discussion? Ms. Varela.
I have one final thing, I'm sorry. But do you think we should make it June 2016 instead of January? That's my only...
I think we said June 20...
You did, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Maybe I misspoke, but I, I believe it was intended to be June 2016.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's fine. All right, so we have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous, all right. And that, thankfully, is the end of the report of the chair.
So, the thought I had, since, since we also talked about the importance of the second page and, and maintaining a focus on those, was that if we could incorporate the two pages and simply make the heading Milton School Committee District 2014 to 2016 Goals? Because I think we, we acknowledge that on the Page Two goals, there's still some work to be done, some of which will be completed hopefully by year end, but some of which won't.
So, the only thing that, that I would say on that is that, you know, if, if you're a strict construction, a strict constructionist and you look at the policy, the policy says you, each school committee each year develops its goals. And so, that doesn't mean we can't, we can't say, "Well, we have devoted the same amount of time and energy and review as did last year's school committee to these eight, seven goals, and we think that those should be continuing goals." It doesn't mean we can't do that. I don't know that, I don't know that this school committee has done that. And so, I, so I would, I would be hesitant to do that. I think, I think it accurately captures that these are school committee goals from 2014 and 15 that were intended to be ongoing and are ongoing. And, you know, we could indicate, as Kevin suggested, ongoing 2014, 2015, but I think it, I think it, unless we're prepared to say that we have reviewed all of these goals in the detail that, that was, that last year's school committee did and we, we think, you know, we want to have, rather than four goals, we want to have 11 goals. I, I just don't think it, I don't think it accurately, accurately captures what we, what each school committee did if we say, "Well, these are 2014 through 16." I think they're, I think they're separate years, separate discussions, separate school committees. I agree that they're ongoing, but I, I hesitate...
As you might recall, four of the six of us who are here now voted and approved them.
That's right, that's right.
So...
That's right.
The only remaining questions are whether Ms. Varela and Mr. Donahue would agree that we should adopt those goals as well. I, I want to make sure that we don't lose the focus on those goals. And I'm not a strict constructionist, so I think we could very well say that as a committee, we, we will adopt these or continue to focus on these as well as these additional goals.
Yeah, I don't, and I, and Laura, I don't, I don't think if, if, if we say that these are ongoing goals and, and that they, and we append them to the goal, to make sure that we continue to pay attention to them, and we do pay attention, continue to pay attention to them, I don't think, I don't think, you know, I don't think we need to say, I don't think we need to cloud the issue by just melding it all together for both years. But anyway, Ms. Ms. Varela, I think, had her hand up, or?
You know, I'll, I'll just say, just for the record and for the minutes, that I, I would definitely support that the 2014-15 goals should be ongoing and supported and make sure that, you know, they're accurately carried out and, you know, all that. So, I definitely will commit to that.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I think that when I look at the 2014-15 goals, and there's seven, and I see one, three, five, and six as what I would call rolling goals, you know, they're going to, they're continuing. Two, four, and seven, I think, I hope, are done or should be done, right? Complete a special education program review by calendar year December 15, well, that's...
It can happen.
I would suggest to you, well, we actually had an update on the status, but I, I would suggest to you that that, none of them have been completed yet. We have more progress on some than others.
Right, so, what I was trying to get is if we can separate out, not for tonight, but maybe we could sit down and go over them if you want, maybe, I don't know, but to say, "Okay, here's, I mean, rolling a three-year financial academic operations capital plan by Ju-, July 1, 2016, that's not going to be done, right?"
I don't know. I hope so.
Okay, so, maybe it would be helpful in looking at these, you know, I'm used to plans that you have the goal, the timeline, who's going to do it, and what are the action steps? So, I think these are great goals, all the things we've come up with, but then I feel like they get lost because we don't have, it's not clear to me what the action steps are. Since they're our goals, they have to be our action steps. They can't, we can't put them on the administration.
All right, so, so I think that's, that's, that may be a different issue. So, 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 you know, again, I'll just say, I, I like to, to, to say, "These are the goals for this year because this committee came up with them. These are the goals for last year, they're ongoing." That's what, that's what my view is on this. Do we have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, Dr. Donahue.
Before we move to a motion, I, I will echo Sheila's comments that I, I do support these goals, I think they're important, and I think it's important that we not lose focus of them. I would, I would echo Member Walker's comments that it's, it's important that we, I feel as though it's important that we address them formally because, you know, to a certain extent, we, we are bound by the decisions of prior school committees, but to a certain extent, we're not. And I, I think it's important that we, we continue to focus on these and, and commit ourselves to seeing them through. And, and to that extent, I wonder if a, a vote readopting them as rolling 2014 to 2016 goals would be appropriate because we would then bind ourselves to these goals.
All right, so, so Ms. Bedair.
All right, I'll just say one, I'm, you know, I'm in support of continuing those goals. I don't know if we have to take, I don't know if it matters if they're all on the same page. I don't know if it matters, there's, as Mr. Walker pointed out, there's four of us that voted on them and we're committed to making sure that we see those goals through, so I don't, I don't see the danger in them getting lost. I don't know if it's really necessary to, to have a vote every year on whether we're going to continue seeing through any goals that haven't been completed, but if there's, there seems to be a concern about that. I don't know if there is other goals that we've kind of dropped or if we have to look back at, you know, every goal we ever didn't do, but it, it just seems to be a little needless, but if, if people are concerned, I have, you know, no problem, just, we could also just say we, with, you know, adoption of these 2015-16 goals, we are also looking at goals that are continuing in the, from the 2014-15 year, if you really think we need to do that. I don't, I don't think that we do, but if, if there's a concern there, I'm fine with it. I think everybody at the table is committed to, has said they're committed to them ongoing.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say is, you know, when we look back, you know, five years from now and a school committee wants to, wants to find out what the goals were for a particular year under this policy, what were the goals for that year, and it comes up 2014, 2016 goals, it just might be a little confusing. And, you know, so, so again, I, I think we're all committed to these goals, but I, it just seems to me, it's, it's a little bit more clear if we say, "Okay, these are the, these are this year's goals, these are last year's, last year's goals, they're ongoing." And, and it, it would be more clear to future school committees as to actually what we did, rather than kind of meld them all together. So, that's, that's my view of that. I don't know if we have a motion?
I have a motion.
All right.
I, I move that we adopt the documents entitled 2015-2016 Goals and 2014-2015 Goals as rolling 2014 to 2016 School District, Milton School District Goals.
So, 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 so is, this is a motion in terms of what we're going to call them or?
It's, it's a motion to make clear for your purposes that what happened in 2014 and 2015 and what happened in 2015 and 2016, that is, they were goals that were voted separately...
Right.
...but also an acknowledgement that we are now considering them as a complete list of goals that covers 2014 to 2016.
Okay.
I don't see any downside to it.
No, I just want, I just, I'm just trying to think about the form of it, Leroy. Are we going to put something on the top that says to, I'm just thinking about the form and maybe we can work that out.
Yeah, I'm sure we can work that out.
Yeah, I just...
So, you have the separate sheets...
Yep.
...and then you have a title above it that says, "School District, Milton School District Rolling 2014 to 2016."
I don't have any objection to that. I mean, I think that, I think that's fine. If we put a little thing at the top and 2014 to 16 and then have the two different pages...
But that, that way, whenever we look at the goals...
Yep.
...this sheet comes with this sheet.
I think, I think that's fine.
As long as they're separate, that's...
Yeah, they'll be separate, they'll be separate.
Separate, see?
But, but we haven't, just to make clear, we haven't, we have...
Yes, we have, we have...
Okay, all right.
We might add another one.
Right, and I don't think, I don't know that we need a motion. I'll just, we'll prepare it that way, that it says, we'll prepare the title and we can...
I have your word on that.
You, you don't need my word on that.
Okay.
You don't need my word. All right, so...
Thank you.
So, we'll, we'll put a different title on it. All right. Anything else on goals?
Please.
Thankfully, we are on to the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Approval of vendor warrants. Dr. Pavlichek, do we have?
We had one vendor warrant since our last meeting that was signed off on, hasn't been approved in a meeting.
That is number?
That was number seven. It was in the amount of $225,246.99, and it was dated August 13th. We signed off at, at the retreat meeting on August 7th, but never voted it formally.
Is that the only one?
We'll have another one, uh, beginning of next week. That's the only one we have for tonight. I will be calling you on Monday or thereabouts for another warrant.
Great. So, I would move approval of vendor warrant number seven in the amount of $225,246.99, dated August 13th, 2015.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Five in favor, Mr. Walker abstaining.
Next is the DESI Innovative Preschool Program Grant Tuition. Do we have an attachment for that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we do. And so, this is something that we discussed at our last Finance Subcommittee meeting and are now recommending that the full committee approve the request for a full-day preschool program with a tuition... full-day preschool program with a tuition of $8,790 for the 2015-2016 year. This is largely resulting from a $200,000 grant that Senator Joyce was successful in inserting into the, the final budget. And probably had a lot to do with the tool that Ms. Pedera took him on earlier in the year and wowed him. So he was so impressed that he said he would give us some money, and he actually did it. So, in order to offset the program cost, we have set the tuition for a selected number of participants at $8,790 for the '15-16 school year. So we would recommend your approval. So moving approval of that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Next is...
Yeah, we have the issue.
Issue?
The budget.
Oh, right.
The budget calendar.
Right.
Sorry.
Separate?
No.
Same thing?
So, um, we, we actually have two schedules that we're asking you to approve this evening. And they are highlighted by red type and blue type. Through our chair, the selectman requested that we provide an estimated contingent and non-contingent budget figure for fiscal 17 by October 1st. That is a, a very aggressive schedule. But fortunately, because of the five-year planning process that we did last year, and Dr. Pavlicek did an incredible amount of work on that, so we have a list of assumptions that we can use to estimate costs over a multi-year period. So what we've proposed to do, and the Finance Committee discussed this, actually Chairman Zulis was present for both of those discussions, but what we decided to do was to use that five-year planning model to create what I'm calling here the estimated bottom line budget figures, and then go ahead with the normal process that would have us submitting a budget to the warrant committee by December 1st. So the two deadlines are October 1st, by which we would provide estimated contingent and non-contingent budget figures to, I think, the selectman and the town administrator, and then our normal budget process whereby we would submit a more detailed budget that we've approved to the warrant committee by December 1st. So I'm moving approval of this budget calendar for the fiscal '17 budget process.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Bagley Jones.
I'm sorry. Who's on the Finance Subcommittee?
Um, Ms. Pedera and I.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, I take my hats off to you. This seems like a very ambitious, well-done calendar. September 30th, we would look at the estimated contingent and non-contingent bottom line figures, the school committee?
Wow.
What's today's date?
The 28th. No.
Today is August 28th.
August 26th. Sorry.
August 26th, yes. I'm counting August. So in a month, we would be looking at that?
Yes. Well, that's to meet the selectman's request that we submit something to them by October 1st.
And when do you meet usually?
That's an interesting question.
Friday, noon, exactly.
What time?
Nine.
Are they posted as full, school committee meetings?
Yeah, they are.
Okay. So I might try to come to some because I wouldn't be in any position in a month to look at anything about hearing more.
We'll be very excited to see you.
Yeah. Well, I didn't promise.
I'm just letting you know, there's no fresh scones like at Health and Wellness and Smoothies. Finance is all business.
Right. It's all about the harvest.
Well, then.
Second, we'll second that.
Well, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, it's unanimous. Sorry. It's unanimous. Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee Report. I think Ms. Varela has a handle on this, so Ms. Varela.
Yeah. I'll be, and I'll try to be brief because I know it's late. So over the past couple of months, what, what the committee has been doing is, at the elementary level, we have assessed walking groups, walking routes to each of the schools. We've met with our rep from the Massachusetts Transportation Department. And we've come up with the best, safest walking, walking routes in each elementary school district. And the next steps that we're going to take with that is the PTO, I have asked, and Superintendent Gormly sent out an email blast to the PTO leadership, that if they could appoint transportation leads as part of their PTOs and organize and work with, and reach out and work with our Massachusetts Transportation Rep. I, her name is?
Yana Linhardt.
Is it what it, what it?
Yana Linhardt.
Yeah, yeah. But she's very eager to meet with each school and, and work to put together walking school buses, more walking school buses. I mean, it's going to depend on each school and, you know, put a committee together. But the best way to alleviate traffic problems is to have more walkers. So they, we're going to try to implement that more aggressively at each elementary school if we can. It's going, you know, it all depends on each community. But she's going to work with each school and, and put that together. So that's a big step that we're going to try to implement in the fall. And at the middle school level, we have been working with Dr. Spalding and the head of traffic for the Milton Police Department, Lieutenant Mark Alba, about putting together a new drop-off and pickup route at Pierce. So we have yet to formally finalize it and put it out there, but we're, we're getting very close to that. And Dr. Spalding will be sending something out once it's concretely voted on and approved. Just a couple of minor tweaks we need to sort of address. But, so, so those are the two big, what does I say, actions, action items we've made at the elementary level and the middle school level. And right now at the high school, there really doesn't seem to be major transportation problems. So right now, that's kind of null and void.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for, for all the work that you've done over the last few months, Sheila. Next on the, the agenda is the July 29th minutes. And so I will move for approval of the July 29th minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? 501, Mr. Walker abstaining. All business, citizen, citizen speak topic response. We don't have anything there. Next meeting agenda items. Do we have, for next meeting agenda items, do we have a, should we put a policy subcommittee report?
Should. Yep.
And will that relate to any particular policies, or?
Several. I, I want to make sure I don't omit any, but at least five, one of which includes the domestic violence leave policy.
Okay. And we'll circulate the list well before the meeting so that all the members have a chance to review it. Anything else for next meeting agenda items? Mr. Walker.
I'd like to have the consultant that we've engaged for the special education program review brief the school committee on the program review and give the committee the opportunity to ask any questions they might have.
Ms. Pedera.
We are also, they are also, they've invited all of us to the meeting.
May I address that?
Ms. Gorman.
On the eighth, I believe that everybody's been in, the CPAC, the principals and the school committee have been invited to a meeting with the consultant. And I was going to ask for the agenda item to be for us to update. The school committee will be at that meeting on the eighth with the consultant, all the CPAC leadership, and the principals to hear the plan for focus groups, the plan for visits, to hear the feedback from the school committee, to hear the feedback from the CPAC, what they're looking for.
So if, if the intention is for us to participate in the meeting, to have discussion, then we should post that as a school committee meeting?
Yes.
Any objection to doing that, any of the members?
No objection, but unless it's televised, I'd still prefer to have the consultant come here so that parents and other people interested, members of the general public could hear the presentation.
Who was invited to that meeting on the eighth?
The eighth, school committee, school principals, and CPAC leadership.
All right. So we'll, we'll post the, the meeting on the eighth, and then on the ninth, we'll, we'll see if we can have the special education consultant come in.
Yes.
Okay. Anything further? Any other next meeting agenda items? Seeing none. No citizen speak. And so now, executive session, I will move that we, excuse me, that we enter executive session for the purpose of reviewing minutes of prior executive sessions. And we will be not reconvening an open session after the, after the end of that executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Yeah, say yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Ms. Pedera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned until September 9th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.